Welcome me out to the Planning Commission tonight, September 7th, 2023. Roll call, call to order.
Chairman Cox.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ferris.
Here.
Commissioner Hayman.
Here.
Commissioner Mondragon.
Here.
And Commissioner Richter.
Here.
Five present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Do I have approval of the agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second. Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman.
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon.
Aye.
And Commissioner Richter.
Aye.
Five present, or five ayes?
Thank you. Do I have approval of the minutes of 7:25:23?
I'll move.
Second?
Chairman Cox.
Was absent.
Okay. Vice Chairman Ferris.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman.
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon.
Aye.
And Commissioner Richter.
Aye. Wait, I was absent.
Okay, three ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the public comment section of our agenda, persons wishing to address the commission on matters that are within the commission's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time pursuant to Brown Act, the Planning Commission may not take any action that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes and the public comment section of the agenda is limited to one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to or on the phone that would like to address some matters that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on. We're going to open this public hearing this evening at 6:32. Draft 2023 through 2031 Planning Commission Housing Element and Fair Housing Analysis. Review of the draft documents, make recommendations to the city council, review of draft documents, and forward to the state housing community development department. Staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. Our consultant is here this evening. It's going to provide you with the presentation tonight. So Mr. George, if you'd like to step up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. It's a pleasure to be here again to see you all. At tonight's meeting, we are going to be looking at the draft housing element and the fair housing analysis that we, our firm has prepared. So briefly, as we have in the past two meetings mentioned, we followed a certain process in meeting the steps that Housing and Community Development of the state wants us to analyze existing housing conditions. So the housing element itself has a certain set of statistics that is presented in the housing element, which is supported also by the fair housing analysis. It is probably for the first time that we are doing this fair housing analysis. In the past, there was a chapter or section in the staff report that was called fair housing, but now on they started asking a very detailed analysis of what the community is like so that they can compare the proposed programs, whether or not it meets the intent and what we have, the actual situation in the community. You have been provided with a staff report. Staff would request that that staff report be entered into the record. And the process here is that I would make a brief presentation. The slideshow, the PowerPoint presentation follows what is discussed in the staff report, but with more details that you will see in the PowerPoint. So that will cover both the requirements of the housing element as well as the fair housing document. Heather, let's start moving.
I can just go the other way.
There you go. Okay, got it. Thank you. So we conducted a couple of workshops and we have come to the point where we have prepared a draft analysis. So prior to the matter coming up for adoption, later in the process, we will do an environmental analysis as well as part of the resolution that the city council will adopt. The Planning Commission and the city council will review the final document that we will be adopting. Prior to adoption, the process requires that the state approves first statutorily, and subsequent to the statutory approval, we adopt it, and then we send a resolution of the adopted document to HCD, and then they certify that they will send us a certification document saying that we are fine and dandy. So that is so much for the process briefly. We have already gone through what a housing element is, and it's basically, it's a vision plan for providing housing for all income groups and especially furthering affirmative housing, housing policies. We have reviewed and revised it, as we have discussed in the previous meetings, and we went through a certain set of analysis, as you can see in the PowerPoint, that is assessment of fair housing. We analyzed the site inventory that is available, and we also identified certain goals and actions that we will fulfill in the sixth cycle, that is by 2031. This set of data was previously presented, and that shows what our community looks like. Our population is approximately 30,000 people. White, not Hispanic comprises of 64.5 percent. Hispanic or Latino is about 21 percent. Total number of households, 11,000 something. Owner occupied households are about 60 percent. So that shows a very high ownership rate in the community, with of course, the remaining 40 percent renting from some source or the other. Median household income, as we have discussed, is very high in the city. It's almost 77,000 plus. But at the same time, regardless of the high income, we also have a reasonable amount of poverty that is about 11.4 percent. We have a highly educated group of people in the community. High school plus age 25 group comprises of 90 percent of the population aged 25 plus. And of the same group, bachelor's degree holders are about 32.8 percent. We have looked at different criteria that was required to be analyzed, and this data, I believe in some form, was discussed, but not the results. We looked at diversity index, which is basically racial and ethnic diversity, that is only one to 100. The diversity score is located in the central and northeastern portions of the city, while low diversity is located in the southern portions of the city. So there is some diversity, but it is localized in certain geographies, but it is not drastic. We also looked at a Guinea coefficient, Guinea index, which is also rated from one to 10. Ours is generally moderate at .41. So if you really compare that with the county, it is .46, and for the state, it's .48. So the higher the number, the higher the disparity in income. So that's why staff has mentioned that we have a moderate disparity in income. But at the same time, we have a very high median income as well. That shows the general health of the economy here in the city. Dissimilarity index is the uneven distribution of racial or ethnic populations in different neighborhoods. We couldn't really find any dissimilarity for the city. There are certain maps that shows these kind of distributions, how they differ. This is a diversity index map that shows how diverse the population is within the boundaries. And it has a, the legend has a certain gradation from the deeper green to the lighter green. So the deeper green are the areas, especially on the northern portion, where there is some diversity, whereas as you come down to the south, there is less of that. Racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty is called RECAP. It appears that the areas of high diversity do generally correlate with lower incomes, and that areas of medium to low diversity reflect high income levels. As we have stated, the income levels of the city generally are high, and so you would not find a drastic divide in the community. Number five is racially concentrated areas of affluence. We have not been able to buy the definition of what is RCA, or racially concentrated area of affluence, means. So we couldn't find any census blocks with that kind of diversity, because the criteria is that the median household income has to be above 125,000 and a population that is 80 percent or more white. We do have, as a caveat, we do have certain areas where the median income is above 125,000, but that is not necessarily a white population at all. So that's where we have said we could not fit our community into the racially concentrated areas of affluence. Every city has diversity. That is to be acknowledged. There is no community without diversity unless you just find only one racial group in there, if it is black or white or Asian. If the entire city is that, then that is not diversity, it is uniform. But otherwise, in every city that we look at, there is always some diversity. But the issue is, is there drastic poverty? Is there drastic diversity? Are there policies in the city that prohibits integration? And these are the concerns of the state. And of course, just because we are saying it doesn't mean that the state wouldn't come back and say, yeah, we may have misinterpreted the data here, but in that, in which case we will respond to that. This is again, a map of racial diversity. The same kind of gradation speaks for itself. The deeper darker portions are the ones we have some diversity and some poverty. Disparities in access to opportunities is basically to assess whether or not uniformly our people have access to resources. And these resources are banking facilities, educational facilities, or anything of value that the community is desirous of in order to have an upward movement of the people being able to find themselves economically prosperous. So if you don't have good schools, they're not going to be economically very prosperous because they're not going to get good jobs, and we are not able to create industries or any other type of employment opportunities if you don't have the labor pool that's available. So that's where the resources come into picture. The majority of the city is designated as high to highest resource areas. That means we have good schools, we have good opportunities for employment. Otherwise, we wouldn't have that, with the exception of Census Strike number 53. And I believe that is the north Census Strike we have talked about with some disparity overall. Because there is always a correlation with income and opportunities that's there. This one is an opportunity map that is created. This is a database that TCAC and HCD has developed. TCAC stands for the Tax Credit Allocation Committee of the State of California, and HCD is Housing and Community Development, to understand how opportunities exist. So if you can really see, majority of the areas have very high resource opportunities available within the city, except that northwest area. Disproportionate housing needs, which talks about overpayment and cost burdens. The most disproportionate housing needs in risk crash include increasing the variety of housing types at affordable prices for low-income households, as about 48.23 percent of the households have experienced some kind of a cost burden. Cost burden means, you know, they don't have enough money to really afford a decent apartment, maybe, a two-bedroom apartment or a three-bedroom apartment. So they don't have the resources to have that. And typically, in those kind of situations, that's where the government comes in, and especially the federal government comes in with Section 8 vouchers and things like that for certain people who cannot afford. They are provided certain vouchers through the county. And cities also try to ameliorate this kind of a situation by building affordable housing. Affordable housing, by its very nature, we have several of them in town. They are deep restricted, and the cities can impose on them certain restrictions as to what they need to follow. Especially true, especially if we are talking about the fair housing policies, the cities can also impose on fair house, affordable housing projects on how to manage these so that there is no discrimination in giving out these units, so that people are treated fairly, there is a fair application process, and things like that. Again, a map representing the same. Displacement is the other category that we have discussed. Displacement occurs when there is a chance of eviction. You know, a building, that an existing building could be torn down. Where would the people go? Especially if they are from the lower income category. If we have a deep restricted project that has, let's say, typically gone over the 55-year period, then the owners of that unit can, if want, if they could convert this into a market rate kind of unit. And that also is considered potentially having the effect of displacement, because people who are there currently, the tenants who are lower income, may not be able to continue to pay the higher charges that the landlord would impose on them. So that is a potential issue. It's a, it's a big paragraph out there. I'll just kind of read it for, so that we all understand. Most disproportionate housing needs in risk crash includes rehabilitation of the existing housing stock and increased variety of housing types at affordable prices, including housing for lower-income housing households. That, how can we accomplish that? We already have accomplished by the fact that we have several affordable housing projects in town. And then our staff can apply for CDPG and home funds from the states. They are competitive. However, we can apply for and receive additional funding for these kinds of projects. But that's a problem, especially when you don't have enough staff. Because CDPG funding, once it comes in, it also needs heavy-duty administration. So if you have a one- or two-person planning department, that just doesn't happen. But usually, cities, what they do is to contract with a grants coordinator or a grant management company to manage those units, and that's how they do that. Again, Census Strike 53 seems to have overpayments for their mortgages. So Census Strike 53 is probably something that the state would notice and tell us, what are you planning to do to ameliorate those kind of situations? And we'll have to find some solutions for that. Site inventory, we generally feel that our site inventory is adequate. However, we noticed that we do not have a whole lot of R4 zone properties. We have very few properties. We do have multifamily properties, R2 and R3, but R4, we don't have a lot of vacancies, as you can see from the inventory that is presented. So it is likely that the state might come back and say, well, you might have to rezone some of these properties, or increase the density of these properties to be able to manage something. I think we already have a decent density. So increasing the density beyond this point, we are not Singapore, you know. In Singapore, they have 20-story, 30-story, 40-story high rises, and that's how they solve their geographic limitation. It's a small city-state. They don't have any space to go, so they just went upwards. So the skyscrapers that you see in Singapore solves that kind of problem, but we are not Singapore. So eventually, we will have to probably find, if the state asks us, to find some more place to rezone some of the properties. And we will work with the state to come up with a solution in case that comes up. But at this point in the report, we are seeing we have enough vacant land that's available in order to meet primarily RENA. RENA stands for Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and so we do technically comply with that. And that's our position at this point in time. Now, in terms of identification of contributing factors, goals, actions, we are directing that based on the RENA analysis and the proposed programs in the housing element. At the end of the housing element, there are different programs that we have presented. With regards to the RENA allocation, we have to build, I believe, 1,436 units in the different categories such as extremely low, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate categories. Our quantitative housing objectives are typically what the RENA requirements are. We can go over and beyond what RENA requires, and we can say, yeah, we will do, you know, 50-home rehabilitation, we will do some other type of construction that is possible with city funds. But generally speaking, we meet the same requirements as what the RENA says, because there is no obligation to add on to it, you know. In every, every cycle stands by itself. Just because we did not meet all our requirements in the fifth cycle doesn't mean that it gets added on to the new cycle. Because there are fundamentally two reasons why we don't do that. The assumptions that current council or governments take across the state on determining what the RENA numbers are based on a certain methodology, and consultants separately hired, prepare that. And every cycle, some of these methodologies do change, so you don't want to add and cumulatively do double counting. So whatever is in the sixth RENA, that's all what we are obligated to meet. General Plan consistency, you know, we will, before adoption, make sure that the housing element plans are not inconsistent with any of the policies in the general plan. If that's the case, we will include any programs to fix that kind of situation. This is a general vacant sites map. We noticed that we haven't been able to separate the vacant areas with a zoning designation on it. The state might ask, but this is a map that we received from the city, and so we presented it in the way we got it. These are some of the environmental constraints map that we have with flood and fire issues. This is a set of programs that we have proposed after reviewing the existing programs. So this will be continued to monitor assisted units. We will have a code enforcement program, which we had before, and it is continuing. We'll have community development block grants, CDPG home program that I previously mentioned about, to see if we can get low-interest-rate loans to provide additional affordable housing in the community. We have a program for fair housing services. These would again, mean that we will, at the planning counter, provide fair housing guidelines from the state and the feds, as well as provide resources for people if they do have complaints. Small cities such as ours, small planning departments such as ours, do not have the people to be able to take on the caseload. So instead, if there is an issue, we will refer that to a county-level agency, work with Kern County or other nonprofit interest groups that will work with these people to address their concerns. Again, we talk about housing nonprofits. We'll work with agencies such as Habitat for Humanity in promoting additional low-income housing in the community. We will work with HAC. HAC is the Kern County Housing Authority. We will work with them, especially to get the Section 8 vouchers that we continue to get. We will look for a mortgage credit certificate program. I believe this was there in the previous one, but we are continuing it. And of course, the state might ask, what have you done? Why haven't you been successful? And we may have to give some answers to that if they question it. Outreach program, again, this is providing brochures and materials at the counter and having this kind of information placed on the city's website. Any housing-related, disability-related resources that we can provide, it has to go on a website. So I'm sure you have gone through all these different programs that we have mentioned in here. I'm not belaboring going through each one of them. Altogether, we have about 16 programs. These 16 programs, some of them are existing and are continuing, and there is one in where we said we will comply with any new housing laws that have been in effect as of January 1st, 2023. Sometimes, HCD says that's okay. Sometimes, they would say, it's not okay. We got to enunciate exactly what you will do. Say, for example, we will amend the zoning code, having a automatic ADU program that is compliant with the most recent ADU laws. The ADU laws are also part of SB 9. It is different from the housing law ADUs. SB 9 laws are also different, so we may have to kind of see what we can do from SB 9. Nine. The, the, the point to note is that SB Nine ADU laws are not mandatory. They are voluntary, but the city can always look at and see what we can do. We talked about the California Environmental Quality Act before. I wouldn't discuss that. So with that in brief, the next steps would be for us to get a recommendation from this body, to present it to the city council at the upcoming meeting, and the city council will get the same presentation. And we will request the city council to allow staff to forward the draft document to HCD. And HCD processes typically, within a month or so, they will have a preliminary review meeting with staff, myself, and anyone interested from the city to join that. And based on that, we will probably do some minor amendments to what you have seen, and then HCD will send a formal letter to the city stating what is needed to be done in addition to what we have already done. In some cases, they will say, we need additional analysis, this is not clear, we need to have an additional program. So it can sometimes be a little bit exhaustive, sometimes it could be simple, like if it is the rezoning issue that itself has to be addressed separately. So once we get the formal comment, we will again give them what is called a red-line copy of what they reviewed, plus what we have said. And if they are satisfied, they will send us this statutory letter of approval. And once that is received, council can adopt it, and then if everything is fine and dandy, they will certify it, and we'll be in business. So this ends, with this, I conclude my presentation. Sorry, I belabored a little bit. I'm also a planner, so we tend to kind of, you know, when we get the mic, we tend to speak more than sometimes necessary.
Thank you.
So at this time, if you have any clarifying questions you can ask, otherwise, you may open the public hearing to see if any members of the public wants to, to comment, and then close the public hearing and discuss the matter among you. And if you have no other comments, take a vote to present it to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you wait right there?
Yes.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for any of the changes or, or about the housing element or the fair housing analysis?
I do have, I hate this thing, I do have a few questions. One of them is just pedantic, but I think the rest might not. On the Gini, on the Gini index, on your slide, it was listed as being one to ten, but it's zero to one, right? On the slide, it says, the Gini index is listed as one to ten, but it is zero to one?
I'll, I'll correct that.
Okay, that's just pedantic. I know that's not much use. For the, for the recommended, recommended programs, is the indication for funding for those then going to be mostly grants, or is that going to be a part of, is the assumed financial methodology to do a lot of these housing programs going to be a part of tax programs within the city, or is that something the city council has to figure out?
For cities such as ours, the best, the normal way is to seek funding. Sometimes developers would come to the city and say, we want to have an affordable housing project, we are willing to have a restriction on it, and we want to apply for the TCAC, I mentioned, Tax Credit Allocation Committee's funding for, let's say, three or four or five million dollars for a big project. In that case, we have to agree to the proposal, the proposal has to be accepted, and then we have to pass a resolution to have this request submitted to TCAC for funding. And it's a competitive funding opportunity. But besides that, we also have opportunity to apply for funding with CDPG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, and we can also apply for home funds. That is the federal funding that the state gets. In fact, CDPG and home funds come from the feds. And that's why even the State of California Housing and Community Development Department has to do a fair housing analysis for the entire state, and then submit that to the feds. So that's where it started. The feds require the states to do it, and that the states are passing that on to the cities to do the fair housing analysis, and that has really become very big, because it's very expensive and very time-consuming.
Has, has the city applied for CDPG programs before?
I believe we have. Heather, you may want to add some.
Yes, we have, and actually, it went to council for us to be included in the Kern County programs that just went to council last, yesterday, yesterday, actually. So that is our inclusion in the, the home and the CGB, that's all through Kern County.
Okay. I, I think that might be it for now. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment, just that I don't think that there was anything that was super shocking in any of these statistics or demographics, but it is really nice to see it all in black and white on something like this. It's very, very telling, and thank you.
I, I didn't quite hear that. I'm sorry.
I just said, I don't think there was any surprises on any of the demographics that we were looking at in this presentation, but it is nice to see that all on, on paper and black and white.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's quite a task to pull these numbers out. There are primarily two sources. One is the census, decennial census data, that's the home-to-home count, and then we also get the census ACS data, American Community Survey data. That is a sample data with a margin of error, whereas the census home counts are, have no errors in it, they are the actual count. But some of the economic and other social demographic data is not available in the census count data. It's only available in the ACS data. So we have to do a lot of interpolation and analysis. The state is always good by giving a certain set of datas, it's called a data set, HCD data set, so we kind of pick some of those from it. The other ones, we research and get it.
So just as a, a point of interest, the project that was done on NORMA, or is being finished on NORMA, is one where they have come to us and, and as a collaboration with the city and the state, was able to put this project together. And sometimes, this is how the grants and the loans come together to benefit a community. But that's a classic example of, of kind of what's, what's been happening or what can happen. Any other comments from commissioners? Let me turn it to the public. Do we have any public comment from those here or on the phone? Seeing none. Then I would request a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-three fourteen.
Please close the public hearing also.
Pardon me?
Please close the public hearing also.
Will we close it at the end?
Oh, at the end, after the, oh, okay. Oh, okay. Sorry.
I'll move. Do I have a second?
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richter?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, we will close the public hearing at seven oh nine. Moving on, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
For your time and your travel, please be safe.
I will be. I want to express my sincere gratitude to Heather for having diligently worked with staff in giving comments at short notice and really helping, combing through the documents. And there were some last-minute changes that she has recommended, which we have made, and we really enjoy that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Moving on, commissioner comments or committee reports? Any committee reports?
Nope.
The comment that I would have, Heather, is thanks. This has been a long, long process. It's also diverted you from some other things that the commission also needs to pay attention to, and so we too would like to see this put to bed, but I want to thank you, from all of us, for your service in putting this together.
Well, thank you.
Any other staff items?
Just letting you guys know, I will be at the state planning conference next week in beautiful Fresno, so hopefully, I'll be able to come back with some new and exciting ideas to terrorize you all with, now that we're Board of Housing Element.
Do we have anything forthcoming we need to look for?
No, at this time, I don't have any projects really in the queue. We do have some code amendments, mainly that's coming from Travis, just kind of to address our favorite setbacks and accessory structures, so stuff like that. So you can look forward to the regularly scheduled code amendments.
So I would assume that somewhere in here, because I know that we have to look at the general plan and stuff like that on an annual basis, some of those things, and so I'm assuming that some of that will be coming to us. If we can kind of slow down on some of the developments, you know, not that I want to, but that way, maybe we can address some of those other things.
Well, I would mention, you know, something that we had previously, some of us had talked about, is some rezoning. There's, it's really just kind of, in my opinion, housekeeping. None of this is controversial rezoning, but we did not complete that with this due to just some questionable kind of timing. So that will be coming to you, so, and I don't know exactly what it's going to look like, because there is a lot of rezoning, because as I went through those vacant property lists and did that site, yeah, I found a lot of interesting zoning things that I'd like you guys to look at and see what you guys think. A lot of professional office zones, some of which is, already has multifamily housing on it. So, and, you know, as, as a community, do we think that we need that much professional office anymore? You know, some of the things that you guys will definitely be seeing, because I'd like to reshape some of that, that has just become apparent through this process.
Well, and I think, as the consultant mentioned, you know, that the state might come back and require us to, to, I'm sorry, to rezone some things. I ask staff, of the chart that he showed up there of vacant properties, how many of them still had active, you know, you guys saw them last month when I wasn't here, some extensions, and most of them do. And, and so the next question that I would have is, most of those are already zoned, you know, for, say, single-family or multifamily, and, and if we go to changing some of those densities or changing the zoning, maybe, may be a challenge. Or are there other properties that we might be able to include into an R4 or something of that nature? And so we need to kind of look at that without absolutely blowing up what other developers have already started.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, we can't change the zoning on a, on a parcel that has an existing tract map? Is that correct?
We can.
You just don't want to. Not a good idea.
It would be a matter of if we wanted to. And a lot of the properties too, I think, you know, a lot of the single-family ones that do have maps, you know, there might be reasons why that's single-family, you know, or why it's a state, for instance, you know, if you look in that long spreadsheet that shows all the vacant properties, you know, some of those sites, there is reasons why, you know, whether it's flood or earthquake faults or impact from noise, there are reasons why some of those parcels are zoned for estate or single-family, and so we would really have to consider. But, I mean, there's plenty of, in my opinion, having looked at it for quite a long time. I think Travis would agree that he's tired of hearing me talk about it. There's a lot of already multifamily zoned that we could upzone that would be of minimal impact to property owners already.
And I think so too, you know, but, but just be aware, it'd be interesting to see what the state comes back with. And we need to be vigilant in, in being productive, but also being protective of, of those that have already invested a great deal into existing projects. So anything else from staff? Commissioners? If not, then I'll call this meeting adjourned at seven sixteen.